All right, we'll call the meeting to order now that Mrs. Griffins. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the record, this case is going to be a few minutes late tonight. Turn the meeting over to Dr. Fieser or Mr. Burke.
Just want to remind the board and also the public that it was a year ago, well, a little more than a year ago, that the board asked us would we start to do mid-year updates on student performance. We had always done the annual performance sharing out in September, and you asked us to move to also doing something in the mid-year. So that's what this evening is, is provide an update on the major areas of performance for students K through 12. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Burke, and there are a number of teachers and principals here who are going to be part of tonight's presentation as well.
All right, good evening. I noticed on the agenda that I'm it, so I'm going to talk fast. If you don't ask any questions, we'll be done early, so I'll put the pressure on you not asking any questions. But seriously, moving into, this is again the mid-year update on our assessments. Do you, I believe everyone has a copy in front of them. My clicker is working. There we go. So tonight, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be taking a look at NWA results as well as PSAT results. The NWA results are from the winter season. I'll explain that momentarily. PSAT are from October this year as well, from October the previous year. This evening, what we're going to try to do is give you some more perspective on what do we do with data once we get it, because there is that high-level data. And as I said in the past, you know, specifically with NWA, we try to use this as a growth measurement and to help us inform instruction rather than just as a cut score to report out to the public. That is one way we can do it, but more importantly, how do we use this for instruction? The same thing, the PSAT obviously is much more of a public number, but we also would like to show how we can use this for instructional purposes as well. To help me with that, as Dr. Fieser referenced, we have a number of building administrators, central office administrators, as well as teachers here to help us tell the story of what happens once we get past the district-level data down into the building level, into a classroom level, into the student level. So first, we're going to start with the NWA, also known as the MAP, so you might hear us refer to it as the MAP or NWA. The NWA, of course, refers to the Northwest Evaluation Association. In this case, we're looking, there's a number of different ways we can look at this, but we're specifically looking at winter-to-winter results. So when you see any of these graphs, and I'll explain what winter means momentarily, but it's year-to-year. On occasion, I'm also going to refer to cohort data. I use the term cohort loosely, and I think I told you this in the fall. We don't have a direct make sure that 100% of the students that took it last year are the same students that take it this year, but we believe it's closer to 95, 96% of the same students, so we refer to it as a cohort, although in the technical sense, it's not a true cohort. So what is the NWA? Just as a quick reminder, the NWA measures growth over time. It uses a scale. It has its own scale score. It's known as a RIT score, and I think I've said this before. RIT actually is based on the initials of the person who created it. There's no real fancy thing for it. The vertical scale score links across grade levels, so we can compare as early as kindergarten. It actually scales up past 12th grade, in theory. We use it K through 10th grade, and predominantly this evening, we're going to be showing you K through 8th grade. But it does, it does, has the same scale, and we can look at it over those different grade levels and across seasons, which again, I'll explain in a moment. In essence, the growth on these scale scores does reflect direct instruction in a subject area. And the reports break down student growth or achievement by bands, and I'll show you a little bit of that layer. There's some colored bands. It gives us, gives us a good sense of how students are doing, but at high level, again, we can drill down into that individual student level. One of the other things, this is computer adaptive tests, or CAT, in which, depending upon the assessment you're taking, there are different ones, K through 2, pre-K through 2, 2 through 5, and then 6 through college, obviously. But in essence, you're supposed to be able to, in 4th grade, take a test that if you score well on enough of the questions, that you could essentially go up through the grades, up through 8th grade. There are no limitations according to the NWA. So truly, if you're a 7th grade student, but you're at a 4th grade level, that should give us some indication of that. So again, it's on the computer, in our computer labs or with our Chromebooks. Couple other important things to note about the NWA. We refer to seasons, and this is how their scores are reported out, by fall, winter, or spring. We also have a testing window, and we set that at the district level, so all students, typically it's a two-to-three-week window. We set that window to ensure that all students are taking at the same time. It's actually locked out. If you try to take it before or after that, you can't get into it. You'd have to ask us to reopen it. Occasionally, we do if we have a group of students or a snow day, that type of thing. So in this case, as you know from the board packet that was sent home, I tried to explain a little bit some of the difficulties we had this year. The winter-season RIT score is normed, or is calibrated, to 20 weeks of instruction, which would place it somewhere roughly towards the end of January. But they do say that within that acceptable range, you can go plus or minus four weeks. So in other words, you can go from 16 to 24 weeks. It should give you some accurate results within that testing window, according to the NWA folks. As I said in my notice to you in the agenda form, we set our window for late November, early December, and there was a good reason for that. It was we were interested in introducing a new assessment called the Fanta-Simpinell Benchmark Assessment System, or BASS, and because of some training we wanted to do on Election Day and some other times, we set that window for right around now, from January into February. And not wanting to overburden the students with doing that and NWA, we moved it earlier the NWA. The unintended consequence, of course, is that we're outside of the official window, according to NWA, so as a result, it's difficult to make comparisons year-to-year. More specifically, at the elementary level, and just to give you more information, I think I did this in the fall, the scale at the elementary level, especially say kindergarten, sometimes students are expected to make 10, 12 points of growth. By the time you're up into 7th, 8th grade, it could be two points of growth, because essentially, they're learning a lot more skills at an earlier age as opposed to, say, 8th grade. So when you're talking about missing four to five weeks of instruction, we believe that that had an impact on the scores, while at the middle-school level, it had less of an impact. So we just wanted to qualify that. Any questions on that? I know I tried to explain it. Yes?
So if the test is normed with that window of 16 to 24, doesn't it make, I mean, I know that it skews your data, but I mean, doesn't it also make it difficult? I mean, that decision couldn't have been easy, driving the decision because you wanted to do a different type of testing around this time of year? Like, why couldn't the Fanta-Simpinell have been shifted later, a couple of weeks or something, to put you in the window?
I'll take responsibility for that. We were going back and forth on how to move the windows around. It was a bit, you know, school had already started, and we needed to make that decision. And to be honest with you, I hadn't known the exact number of weeks. Now, I'm far more informed with the NWA that it is normed to that. My understanding always was that the scale was shifted based on weeks of instruction. That's what my learning told me about NWA. In other words, if it was three weeks earlier, they would adjust your expected growth, but in reality, it doesn't make that much of adjustment. It does take into account from window to window, in other words, from spring to winter. It helps with if you set the number of weeks of instruction. It does make some adjustment to that, but we were outside of their official window. So that was my mistake, working with the central office team and with some principals, trying to do the best for our students with an unintended consequence. Moving forward, we are going to make sure that the testing calendar makes sense, not overburdening students with too many assessments, and not backing them up, you know, week by week, but still fitting with the NWA suggestions, if you will.
Mrs. Krzyszczynski. So this year, there was no fall testing, right?
Correct.
Will that continue in the future, just having to test for the end of the year?
Which was another, thank you for reminding me. That was one of the points. We chose, again, to reduce the number of assessments on students to just doing twice a year. Again, this was through consultation with our NWA folks, the experts there, saying if you have good, solid spring data, that you're not going to get more data out of students in the fall, because in essence, there's only a few weeks left in spring, there's a summer, and then a couple of weeks of fall. So you can do spring to winter and still show appropriate growth. What we discovered, you know, that's another reason why I thought we can just push it back since we didn't do the fall testing, but we will continue to just do twice a year. I will talk about 3rd grade as we get into the day a little bit more. There's an anomaly there. Again, because there's different tests, there's a K-2 test and then a 2-5 test, and I'll speak a little bit more detail about that.
Mrs. Krzyszczynski? Just one thought. When is the fall testing window? How many weeks is that usually?
Off the top of my head, I think it was week 6 or week 4, and then again, a four-week side or side. But I can get that. I was looking at it yesterday.
The Fanta-Simpinell is another assessment. Is it going to replace the NWEA?
That is an excellent question. It is, gives us different data, and actually, one of our principals will be speaking to that as we get into the data this evening about how it is different than the NWA. We're using the NWA MAP assessment essentially as our screener, you know, the big catch-all assessment, trying to capture overall skills for students, but it doesn't tell us the full story for every student, especially when we talk about K through 3 literacy. There's so many different aspects to it, to proper instruction, proper elements of it, the five elements of literacy. Oh, may I hear? Okay. So, high school history guy, just putting that out there. That, one assessment isn't going to capture that. It's a good screener, in other words, gives us one cut point, but when we start identifying students that are struggling, we need another piece, and that was why the decision was made to add this. And to remind you also, we had the DRA-2, which we've been using for years. The decision was made that that information wasn't quite getting us what we wanted, so we got rid of that one, and we're replacing it with the Fanta-Simpinell or BASS. So we're not adding more assessments. We actually removed one to put this one to, give us better information specifically for the younger students, to ensure that we're meeting their needs and that we can instruct them at the appropriate level.
Overall, are we going to wind up with less testing, more testing, or the same amount of testing?
In essence, I believe, did we do the DRA twice, I mean, three times a year?
We did it twice, and then for some students, we did it three times a year, depending when we did it. And then we shifted to doing it three times a year. So we've done it both ways.
Yep.
So it actually would be less.
And we are looking to do the Fanta-Simpinell twice and the NWA twice. So in essence, there were years, I believe, when we did the DRA-2 three times and NWA three times, and we eliminated one of both. But we still believe by timing them correctly and complementing each other, that they will give us the correct information.
And these are not redundant?
I'm no expert, but I would.
I mean, there's a concern about too much testing in the schools.
I wholeheartedly agree.
Not redundant, though, no.
And why are you not reporting on the 9th and 10th grade for the NWEA?
Well, we're going to speak to that when we get to the principal. We're doing a section on the high school. There's been a shift in thinking, and so as we're making that transition, you know, predominantly, we're looking to PSAT, SAT data as a stronger connection to instruction and to the high schools, in essence. Good question.
So just to clarify on the testing window for NWEA, it's still going to be twice a year, winter and spring?
Correct.
And you'll be moving the window back towards where it was?
We're going to be within the norms of the recommendation.
Okay. Just an observation, and I mean this as constructive criticism, back in September when we talked about strategies to boost the SBA scores and to, we talked about the testing window for SBA was early in the window timeframe, and that hampered the instruction, so you were going to move that back. So this seems to be a similar unintended consequence.
So as, so to your point, you know, we, the acceptable window for SBA last year for the Smarter Balance, I believe, was mid-March through mid-May, and based on testing practices, we had some schools go closer to that April 1st mark. And in discussion with principals and with the curriculum folks, we decided that we would move that closer towards mid-May to give more time for instruction, to ensure that we are getting through the, I'm sorry, through the content and through the standards. Now, we're able to shift the NWA a little bit more again because they give us an eight-week window, and between the two windows, between the state and NWA, we're able to address both of those.
So the same premise, in terms of the later the window, the more instruction you're going to get in?
Correct, yes. With the state or with Smarter Balance, we don't have, they don't give us week 32 or week 30. The states determine the window based on some feedback they get from an assessment committee, which I'm a part of.
Okay.
Same thing with the SAT, we decided to move it later into, it was March last year, we'll be taking it in April this year. So through discussion through this committee, it was decided to shift the window later to provide more instructional time.
All right, thank you. Ms. Federico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just the NWA testing that will be done in the spring, do you know, like, what's the range for that? So if winter is week 20, spring is?
Okay, so I'm going to say, and I can get this to you in the memo, it's 32 weeks, so that'd be 36 to 28, I believe.
Okay.
I was just looking at this, but.
Yeah, I was just curious about how much time, so it's about 12 weeks later?
Yes.
Okay.
The minimum they require, I believe, is 12 weeks between testing windows to get a valid result. Ideally, it's 16 weeks.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mrs. Krzyszczynski?
And will the spring testing be done in the norm window as?
Absolutely.
Jack Ziskowski?
Since the purpose of the NWEA appears to be primarily identifying student weakness areas and being able to address them, does the spring occur early enough to really be able to make a difference in student performance?
We're also using this to help us understand how our schools are doing and how our instruction is going. So we're trying to balance, to have a screener that will give us both student-level data as well as district-level and school-level data. So the springtime is optimal for that because it says, okay, we've had, in essence, a full year of teaching. For instance, when we talk about this data this evening, the winter window, you think about it, if they took it in January last year to December this year, late November, that's half of one grade and half of another grade, or half of one teacher and half of another teacher. So there's, you know, what kind of real information can we glean from that? Can you, other than getting into individual instructional needs and some school-level data, it's, you can't really get into teacher-level data. The spring-to-spring, in theory, says now you've been in 4th grade for a full year with our curriculum, with our instructional techniques, with our, all of our elements. Just had a hiccup there. So supplies, another word for supplies. Instructional supplies, exactly. So all those pieces would fit in, saying, yes, this is working, because we need to use this data for both district-level pieces and building-level pieces to say, wait a second, I see a pattern here. And you'll see that a little bit with 3rd grade. We saw that with 5th grade math, for instance, why across, or 4th grade was here, 5th grade math was here, you know, or 3rd grade ELA, why is there a split across all eight schools? That gives us one piece. Or, you know, seven schools are here, and one school's here or here, what's happening within that school? So there's a lot of different elements we can use with this, and the springtime is ideal for that.
Could I add just one thing, Mr. Jagodinsky? We use the performance on the NWEA certainly to zero in on the students who are not performing well, but we also use it to look at the kids who are, I mean, the whole spectrum of students. So that if students do really well in the NWEA, one of the things we want to make sure is is they don't slide backward. So, you know, how do we ensure that they are continuing to do that well? And if they do start to, what's happening there? So teachers, and I think they will speak to this, they're looking at the full continuum of their students.
Slide 3, that's all I'm saying. So we're going to get into element reading now, NWA specifically, reading. And again, I need to work on how this looks on the screen, but you have it in front of you. So this is year-over-year, winter-to-winter, that's winter of last school year to this winter, again, the January to the December timeframe. So in essence, we're seeing things that, you know, for instance, in grade 1, there's a sharp decline, you know, 67% students at the norm versus 53. This is something that we take a closer look at, you know, why is that? Is it attributed to the testing window? Is this something that we need to do in deeper exploration? In other cases, you know, there's, we see typically a flat. We hope that if we were to do it during the real testing window, that we would see more improvements across the grade level. So we anticipate that, in essence, these scores would be better if we had six more weeks of instruction, really, and fit that window. This is, as referred to before, the cohort piece, again in quotes, because it's not true, and it's a little bit better. It's basically flat, in essence, grade 2 to 3, there's a little bit of drop, but, you know, kindergarten students last year, they're first grade this year, that's that first set there. Second set is first grade to second grade. Again, this is reading, and this is percentage of folks at that expected norm or where they should be for this time of year, according to the NWA. So we see a little bit of uptake. So at this point now, what we'd like to do is take you into, that's the district-level data. What happens when we get into a building, into a classroom? So we're going to do reading and the instructional use of this. You can't read this, and it's on purpose. This is a big, high, this is the report that a building gets. This is for grade 1 at Pumpkin Delight, and there's a lot of information. This is one of the reports that they get. In particular, what I'm going to do for you is I'm going to zoom in on this top bar here. And remember, we recorded earlier, there are bands. They do five levels, essentially, percentiles. You can see it's 0 to 20, 21 to 40, et cetera, by 20% all the way through. This now helps break our students down into specific achievement levels. This now becomes important to the principals and the teachers to say, okay, now we can look at specific numbers of students, because not only just percentages, but actual numbers. And then, oh, we skipped through that. My clicker's not working too well. In particular, what we want to take a look at is that bottom 40th percentile, the first two bands, the red and the orange. Those are the areas that we really want to, in essence, say, these students are behind or behind grade level, behind the norm at this time of the season, and we want to be very specific with these students and take a little closer look. So I zoomed in on that top bar, and again, this is for reading. And the important thing to note, too, is they give us percentages but also numbers of students, because we're talking a low number of students here. I believe the overall number is 34 students. So one or two students can skew percentages, so we like to talk about numbers at this point. And when we take a look at the top band of students, it's about 62% or 21 students that are where we'd like to see them. But then we take a look at the other portion, the bottom half. My clicker wouldn't ever work. And, you know, again, particularly do a percentage, it's 40%, but in reality, we're talking about 13 students. So what, we can dive deeper into these 13 first-grade students now. And again, in particular, what are we going to do with the students that are in that red and that orange level? At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Carrie Furhams.
Do you need a clicker?
It's not working too great.
Be better from doing it. Oh, so I'll stay over here. Okay.
Mr. Jagodinsky?
I have a question. The, on slide, year-over-year, yep, okay, first grade, 53% are making the cut. Okay? That cut for Pumpkin would be 50, 66%? So Pumpkin is doing substantially better than the district does an average in 1st grade. Is that correct?
Their percentage is higher, yes.
All right. So, thank you. All right, so I think this is kind of an interesting opportunity for all of you to see what happens when this data then comes to us, because I know that we like to look at the district and how are the schools performing, but how do we use it at the school level? So my team, which would be Julie Alberti, she's my literacy coach right here, she'll be joining me and sharing some information with you, and then our reading interventionists got together and we looked at the data. Let me just see what we have. All right, so as Mr. Burke said, the NWA does provide some specific information, but certainly not specific enough for us to start deciding, well, how do we move forward with those 13 students? What can we do to support those 13 students and move them along? So what we did was we had to turn to a different assessment, and we know, I know you've heard about the BAS, the Benchmark Assessment System, which we just administered, and that gives us much more discrete skills. Lets us know at the student level. We're not looking at grade or even classroom, but at specific students, you know, what's very specifically do they need? What areas are a weakness? Can we identify, and then how can we address that? So this is what I asked my reading teachers to do, was to go back out, we took, we identified all the students who were on NWEA, showing us that they were below the cut, but also who did not make the cut on the BAS. So we took students who, in kindergarten and in 1st grade, did not meet a Level A. That sounds like a very beginning level, because it is. A is the beginning of the alphabet, and that's the absolute first level that you can be at. And what we dug into was some optional assessments that the BAS provides around foundational skills. In K and 1, your foundational skills are critical. If the students can't, you know, begin to decode text, then, you know, reading comprehension and the other pieces that follow just aren't even going to happen. So we took some phonological screenings, and we administered them to those students. This is, actually, this is our kindergarten, and we removed the student names, but as you can see, we went ahead and screened them in early literacy behaviors, which is print concepts. That is absolutely the most beginning-level reading skill that we need. That's basically saying, this is a book. We know that this is a book, and a book tells a story. This is the cover, you know, really beginning, we read from left to right, you know, basic print concepts. We also looked at some others around initial sounds, around blending and segmenting, and did phonological screenings on those. And then I asked the team to come back, and we looked at that data. And what we found was, I'll just kind of pick this first one, early literacy behaviors. We were able to identify four students who did not do very well in that area. So that's pretty concerning in February kindergarten. They should definitely all be getting a 10. So, or actually, the cutoff, I'm sorry, was an 8. They should all be getting an 8. If they're not getting at least an 8, that's a big red flag for us. So what we did was, we went on to plan our intervention groups, and we targeted those four students to be in an intervention group around early literacy behaviors. And the plan is, it's a six-week group, where it's very focused intervention, basically, we're going to focus right in on those print concepts for six weeks. And obviously, we'll monitor progress. And the idea is, this is a continuum, so early literacy behaviors is the first reading behavior we really want to address, and then initial sounds. So you can see, we identified a second group who were okay with their early literacy behaviors, but had some issues around initial sounds, and we created a second group. A second intervention group there. And again, six-week cycle, and then we'll move on to the next part of the continuum. So that is kind of what we've got going now, and we've sort of, we disbanded some other intervention groups, because this felt like it was more of an urgent need in our K and 1. So that's one thing, but when you take students out of a classroom and you bring them down the hall and you teach them something, and then they go back to class, they don't always carry that learning over. So to do that and instruct in, you know, skills in isolation in itself, we don't think would be effective. So the collaboration and communication between our interventionists and our classroom teachers is huge. So we make sure we have collaboration time once a week, where they get to get together and talk about what the students are doing in that intervention, and also make sure they're speaking the same language. There's lots There's lots of different ways that you can instruct and talk about sounds, and if you don't tell one teacher what you're saying in intervention, then when she has them in the classroom for small group instruction, they may be speaking, you know, different language, kind of confusing the kids. So, that communication and collaboration is huge. So, that piece is in place also. But, we have kind of a two-pronged approach. We don't want to just lead it to our interventionists alone to try to intervene and make ground in these areas. We also have a literacy coach, and I know you guys have heard a lot about our coaches, and she's going to share with you what she's going to do so that in the classroom, the classroom teachers will also be supporting the students in these very specific areas and discrete skills. So, Julie? I think that's, coaching cycles.
Hello, everyone. As, you know, Carrie was explaining what we do with the data in our literacy team and then how we transfer it to intervention groups and then the collaboration between the interventionist and the teacher. That's where, you know, the data gets very personal for us. It's a child in front of us, a group of children in front of us, and that, they're important, and we have to support them in the best way we can. And I think we've done a beautiful job with the collaboration between the classroom teacher and the interventionist. And we wanted to, as a team, when we were talking about this data and we had the additional data through the optional assessments that we did with the BAS assessment, we said, you know, how can we take this a step further to support teachers? And the children that are most challenging to, most challenging their learning are the most difficult to teach also. So, we began thinking about that and we, I could play a role in that around intervention and supporting teachers. And my coaching cycles will be around a differentiated approach to supporting teachers in teaching foundational skills. And what we're going to be looking at, teachers and myself, is data for their classrooms on these students that we are already talking about here. And then looking at the instructional practices across the day, their teaching reading across the day. Where is the best instructional context to support these children? Is it in one area? Is it in more than one? What language do we use? Carrie talked about transferring that language from interventionist to classroom. Does that happen during confering? Does that happen during guided reading? Does it happen during coaching and shared reading? To look across those practices and see, hmm, how can we make a plan for these students or these groups of students? How can we talk to each other about collecting data on them as we're doing our teacher teaching? I might be co-teaching, I might be modeling for the teacher or observing her and writing feedback, and then going back and planning, saying, hmm, what did we notice about the students? What were they doing? How can we plan to make that even more effective? Let's give it another go and come back and reflect and continue planning and reflecting until we get to a point where students have met their learning outcomes and that teachers have increased in their capacity to provide that differentiated instruction to not only these students, but to all students. Thank you.
Thanks. Great, and just not to overlook the importance of continuing to monitor the student progress throughout and, you know, shifting the focus of our instruction as the data, you know, informs us to. I know one of your questions was like, in the spring, you know, how useful is the data? Well, it is useful for us to see how successful we were all year, but we continue to assess using, like, we can re-administer those phonological screenings for the rest of the year as much as we want. And that's where we'll see, did that six-week cycle work? Yes, move on to the next. So, continuing to monitor, you know, the progress of the students is vital. So, I think that's it for us.
And just to your point, oh, I'm sorry, to your point, the screenings, though, are, we're not talking days and days of the testing.
No, 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 they're very quick.
They're very quick assessments. These are quick formative assessments.
Oh, right, right. Formative, it wouldn't be five minutes, you know, to do one.
To give us good data.
Right.
Thank you. Any questions?
Mr. Wiss, come in.
Yeah. Do I understand you're correct that if you detect a student who needs intervention or interventions, that you provide one intervention at a time, that they're not, put in multiple interventions, that they're progressed through, if necessary, two or even three interventions as they make progress.
Right, right. But it's in like a continuum. Not every child will need multiple, you know. Some, if we have a student who was sort of, you know, really just having issues at sort of the end of that continuum with segmenting, it might be one session and they're all set. But it's in response to their needs.
Okay, and the other thing is, you picked out eight of the lower thirteen students. What about the other five that weren't selected for some intervention at that time?
That's a very good question. And I thought you might have to. Okay, so, well, as you know, a lot of those, we have decided right now, those students, the best place for them is still to stay in their classrooms, and they'll be, the classroom teacher will be working with Julie, and she'll be, you know, coming up with ways to support them. But, like, if they need to be picked up, we will pick them up.
So, you might address, hopefully, their needs through some differentiated instructions.
Exactly.
Right, so I'll be monitoring that data with the teacher for all of those students, for her entire classroom. And we'll, you know, specifically be looking at the interventionist students, are all of those identified, those receiving intervention outside of the classroom and then supporting inside of the classroom.
And the final thought was, you had mentioned or alluded to it, pulling students out of the classroom, I mean, there's been pluses and minuses of discussions about the efficacy of doing that.
Right, right.
As opposed to keeping the student in the classroom, but at the same time, it's, you know, if you have twenty-four students and you've got eight of them over here and the other, you know, sixteen here, it's kind of hard to run a classroom, teaching different things to different students at the same time in groups like that. So, I guess it's a question of balance because while they're out, they're not participating in the ongoing instruction in the classroom that the rest of the students are doing at that time, so.
And we only, well, we have like a tiered approach. So, tier one would be students that would be in the general classroom setting and are getting their needs met, needs met through just the curriculum as it stands. Then we have tier two students who are, you know, maybe performing slightly below, and for those students, we try, they are in the classroom and interventions happen in the classroom. We push in and provide extra support with reading teachers and the classroom teacher collaborating. The only students who come out would be students who are in a tier three. So, you pointed out that, you know, that that group, we had a four students that didn't have print concepts. That's pretty far away from the rest of the class, so they really do need that focused, you know.
To try to catch up.
Right, but the way that we've done the schedule, with the new schedule at the elementary, we do have dedicated intervention blocks, so they are not missing out on anything that is being taught in the classroom. So, during that time, students who maybe did really well on the assessment might get an extension enrichment time in the classroom. We might have students have an opportunity to get onto some of our software programs like Khan Academy or Lexia and have, you know, other kinds of instruction going on that would not be vital or, you know, really just a terrible thing for the kids to miss when they're out. So, we do kind of have a pretty good setup right now with the schedule.
Good, and the final thought that had occurred to me was that many times, a student may have some literacy issues, but it's not necessarily related to their intellectual capacity, but rather to all the surrounding issues they might have in family life or other things. So, I was curious as to how do you assess their environmental situation to address maybe some of those other factors that may be occurring in their life that affects their ability to focus on their education?
Well, students who seem to be struggling and, you know, it is complicated. Like, you just explained a lot of things that we're grappling with all the time in our schools. We do have a student assistance team that meets every week, and if there is a student who maybe has something going on that maybe isn't like, you know, skill-related, but attention, we hear that a lot, students who really struggle with focus and attention. So, they, the teacher might take that child to our student assistance team, and then we meet together, we have the school social worker, we have a psychologist, we have, you know, people there who might, you know, have expertise.
So, you can bring other resources to bear, right.
Right, and then can offer us strategies and suggestions for addressing those issues. So, we do, we have that avenue also that we use.
Thank you.
Mrs. Betterick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one question to be clear, this chart that we have, that you're showing us with the early literacy behaviors, initial sounds matching, is that from the Fanta-Simpinell?
Fanta-Simpinell, okay. Optional assessment. So, those are assessments that we did following the initial BAS assessment.
Okay.
As a follow-up. So, the BAS looks at, we get instructional level of the students by administering the assessment, and it looks at comprehension, it also looks at fluency. And if students make errors when they're, in their oral reading fluency, the teacher will mark down the types of miscues that they made. That can lead us to more, than we may choose to do the optional assessments to dig a little deeper and find out specifically what's going on.
Okay, so in this case, the optional assessments were done on all the first grade students?
No.
No, just the ones on this list?
Just the students that we flagged from NWA and BAS.
Okay.
The initial BAS. They didn't pass the level A.
Okay, okay.
And they were weak in the foundational skills on NWA, too.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. Gregory?
So, last, last time I looked at the NWA and the Smarter Balance, there was a gap that NWA was higher than the Smarter Balance. I'm just wondering in what way the Fanta-Simpinell data helped bridge the gap? And basically, to what degree are all three of these, or are they equally well-aligned to the Common Core state standards? Or are they, I just, I want to know if they're all aiming for the same target?
I'm not a statistician, so I can't make the correlation between the three assessments I tend to tell you I met with the head of the data team for the state, and he does say that there is a correlation, in essence, to the Common Core for both the NWA and the SBA, but the assessments are different. So, you can't say that they're exactly the same, and you're going to see a gap because the tests are different. And to think about the NWA and the Fanta-Simpinell, the NWA students are on a computer and they're using a mouse and they're clicking through things. With the Fanta-Simpinell and the BAS assessment, essentially, the teacher's working one-on-one with the student and listening to them speak. So, there's, what we're looking for is a complimentary assessment to help give us the picture. You know, in the end, we're accountable for the scores on the SBA and we're reporting at the NWA, but I always want to emphasize and just constantly remind folks that we don't want to get in a situation where we're teaching to a test and that we are using these assessments to ensure that we're growing students. Are these scores where we want our students? No. Are the growth scores better? Yes, we didn't report those here, but we are seeing better growth scores. But again, that we, because of the testing window, we're not placing all that much emphasis on this. But if even we look at the winter scores from last year, they weren't anything to write home about in either, but we know that there's work to do. But the point of tonight's stories, in essence, are to say, okay, we have this assessment, so you just heard this, that we had the initial screen with the NWA. Okay, we identified a few students, and then there was another screen that identified perhaps a couple more. Now we have a tool to say, okay, what's really happening here? And now we can actually instruct those students where they individually are, and then we can move them forward. So, I know your original question was, are they all moving towards the same thing? Yes, we want students that read and do math well, if you like a better phrase.
The middle part was, how does the Fanta, to what degree does the Fanta-Simpinell help to bridge between those, or does it, is it separate?
Senator, would you like to speak to that a little bit?
I mean, when you think about the NWA and the BAS, you're looking at different types of reading comprehension. So, and you're also, I'm sorry, the NWA and the SBA. And within the BAS assessment, it's the same skills. You're looking for reading behaviors that kids will need to be able to apply independently when they are working within text on NWA. So, while the testing and the questions are identical, the thinking skills behind what we want kids to be able to do while they're reading both informational and fiction texts are supported. Does that make sense?
On to math now, the elementary level, again, using NWA and thank you to the Pumpkin Delight folks. So, year over year, winter to winter, different groups of students, same grade level. So, in other words, kindergarten took it last year and then different kindergarten group took it this year. Looking at either situation, we are seeing some growth, you know, we like to see second grade there. There's that, some growth from first into second grade. However, again, this is not where we want our scores, neither is this or the reading scores. And to one, to one point, when we talk about tiered intervention, when we look at a group of students and we're at the fifty-three percent of students at the expected norm for the year, that's not intervention. We have to take a closer look at what's actually happening within the classroom because we can't intervene with half of four hundred students. In other words, we can't do tier two and tier three kind of interventions with two hundred students. So, we have to take a much closer look at what's happening in the classroom. What's, you know, is it the curriculum, is it alignment to the curriculum? Is it the instruction, is it aligned to what we expect students to be able to do according to our curriculum? Is it instructional supplies? Is there resources? Are they all aligned? Is the pacing aligned? You know, is there something happening in one building that's going well and then it's not going well in another building? And why is that? What's the differences between these buildings? So, there's a lot of things that we have to explore, you know, that we need to help define, why is it that we're not seeing the jump that we'd like to see? Because I can be frank that we are, that the principals, the coaches, the instructional supervisors, the reading specialists, the math interventionists, they're all working towards the same end. They're all looking at the same data, and they're all, you know, through our alignment, through SCIP, their school improvement goals, the district goals, through principal SLOs, teacher SLOs, those are their goals. It's all aligned towards improving student achievement, and we're hopeful that with this alignment, that we're going to see continued growth over time. So, are we where we want to be? No, but we're doing the right things. We just have to ensure that they're all aligned and make sense across the entire district. So, and then taking a look at, again, the rough cohort. The picture's a little bit better, you're not seeing loss. I do want to talk briefly about the second to third grade. The assessment itself changes in the, it's called the MPEG or MAP for Primary Grades is a K through two assessment. There's a lot more support there on things like the question being read to the students and they're able to click on different pieces and get the sounds of things. When they shift over to the two through five assessment, even though there's an overlap in second grade, we shifted that to third grade, there's not the same supports. And so, we're curious, and that was new this year, so we're curious if we're seeing that drop-off. In addition, the students aren't exposed to it in fall because we're only starting in winter. So, we're curious again that if they have the fall experiences that help them in the winter because they've already seen this test for the first time. So, that is something that we're exploring in greater depth. And again, we're going to go into, how do we use this information now in a different building? In this case, we're going to take a deeper look at second grade at Caff Pen Meadow. So, I didn't show you the full picture, but again, we're zeroing in on their bands, their achievement bands. In this case, in second grade, you can see that they're twenty-eight percent are in that fortieth or lower percentile, but in real count, it's seventeen students. If we take a look at the over fortieth percentile, you know, you're seeing a much larger group. So, we're going to take a closer look again at the lower fortieth percentile. One other thing is, you get a picture of this in your packet. One thing that we can do as a, for individual teachers is this is a great report that we can get for individual classroom. And it's not showing up that well on this, on this slide here, but on your paper, you can see that there's plus signs. Those plus signs designate individual students for this particular class in second grade. And what the scales show us, and this isn't working, this vertical scale here, this is overall growth. And as you go up the scale, you want to see, that means that students are, regardless of where they're starting in their achievement, that they're making appropriate growth. The bottom scale, the horizontal scale, this is their overall achievement. So, in other words, that middle line would mean that they're essentially at the norm. To the left of it, they're below; to the right of it, they're ahead. To the right of it, they're ahead. And what you ideally want to see is students in that green quadrant. This is interesting to us because we see a cluster of five students that are making low growth and they're, have low achievement. Even if we take a look at the two students at the top there, above that 50th percentile, their achievement is low, but they're at the top of the scale for growth. So if that growth continues over time, they will move over to the right into that green because they're continuing to grow more and more and more. In essence, if you're smack dab in the middle of that T and you're starting at grade level, you will continue at grade level for the most part. If you're below that 50th percentile for growth, eventually you will keep slipping backwards. So these five students for us are a concern because they're not high achievement and they're also not making the right growth. So that's one of the pieces. This gives us another report to look at. And the full report goes down, actually, you click on those, it gives you the names of students. So it can then, below it is a full table of all their scores, their growth, et cetera. So it's not just this pretty report. We actually get the student level data for this. So I'm going to now turn this over to Ms. Pedregal, Principal of CAF Pen Meadow.
Yeah, of course I would. I'm here tonight with Mrs. Husse, Darlene Husse, who's the literacy coach. Thank you. At CAF Pen Meadow. And, um, thank you to Pumpkin Delight for that very thorough introduction because you would find that many of the same methods and approaches for looking at the data surrounding literacy is much of how we look at our math, um, performance with the NWA. We wanted to, uh, tell you this time of year when we're taking stock about the goals that we set for learning targets back in the fall for students. We think about their progress to date and consider and reflect upon our action plans for their continued growth and the growth of all students within our learning community. So we look deeper again at students who are not making appropriate growth, but again, as Dr. Fieser pointed out earlier tonight, students performing at all levels. We certainly want to continue, uh, to challenge students that are performing at high levels as well. And we also wanted tonight to talk to you about how we help students to become partners with us in their learning, even at our youngest levels in kindergarten. This is an example of one of our, um, I'm sorry, grade two student who is, uh, his name is Kevin. And you can see there, he is setting his own growth targets based upon, uh, the NWA map results from his benchmarks earlier in the year, spring of last year and winter to this year. And I wish you could see, uh, what he's talking about, where he's writing a written reflection and he said for math, he's going to go back and check his work. He's going to go on to fast math and he's going to work on independent evaluation because we really want to make sure that students are at the center of, um, setting learning targets for themselves and monitoring their progress right along with us.
In addition to, uh, using, uh, NWA data to plan for small group instruction or whole class instruction, um, our students and teachers are currently using Khan Academy. It's an online learning tool and it helps to customize and individualize, um, what students are ready to learn or to practice for mathematics. So essentially, a classroom teacher creates an account and they input NWA scores into Khan Academy. And then through the, the student account, they are presented with skills that they are ready to practice. And this is, um, available for students to use in school, on their homebooks, in their classrooms, where in our computer labs, and some teachers assign it for homework. With Khan Academy, students see skills and concepts in math that are ready to learn or the rate of practice. And there's also opportunities for a challenge. They can watch videos, um, for, for the math, on the math concepts. And, um, it's, I think, also a great opportunity with the videos for families to see what students are learning and how the math is being taught, being taught as well. So Khan Academy is another tool that, um, we use along with NWA.
With our youngest learners and then all the way up to the middle school. I'm sure that you would hear that from our colleagues at the middle school and I know it as a middle school mom myself. Um, something else that we wanted to point out to you is we do have a real urgency around improving student, um, learning outcomes in our schools. And one of the things that we want to focus on is making sure that the NWA assessment may be, uh, 27 minutes of, of one child's, um, spring assessment opportunity with this one assessment. It's an important data point, but it's one data point. And we certainly, just like the BAS with the literacy piece, are looking at multiple measures to measure student progress, like benchmark, um, assessments that we have, um, through our math department, unit assessments, direct teacher observation, et cetera. But in order to make sure students and staff and families, all stakeholders are understanding the urgency around student growth for every learner within our community, we have created, um, actually, our staff has created, they let in every, uh, grade level and grade level bands in all of the hallways, the creation of, um, data walls. And so you wouldn't see individual student names here because, um, we, we want to make sure that we are, uh, supporting all students where they are and no one is feeling bad. But the concept, even for our youngest learners in kindergarten, is that everyone knows they're moving toward that growth area, up higher and higher and higher. The, um, first grade where it says the sky is the limit, those little bows on the kites are individual students. So what we'd like to see is the benchmarks for each norm for the, you know, winter and spring data points. We want to see all of our students moving past and exceeding those expectations. And the students are very, uh, competitive against themselves. They want to set high learning targets and work really hard with their teachers and care and grownups at them to achieve them. So we hope that you can see, this is how we, these are just some strategies that we're using to engage students as partners in their growth at our school.
Questions?
I, I have a quick question. Um, how do we support students that might not have computers at home when, when work is assigned to them that might need a computer?
That's a great question. We have found that most students have some type of tablet at home. Maybe it's not a desktop or a laptop. So many of our students have been able to access the, the multiple programs and, um, apps that are, that are used to support their learning. But we're also very fortunate to have computer labs in our schools and Chromebooks and laptops, laptop carts, um, and computers in every classroom as well as iPads. And we're able to use the time before school, the 20 minutes before and the 20 minutes after. And the teachers, you know, every student's success is our success. So the teachers, very much how they've identified students and they've created differentiated, flexible groups, um, for kids at all levels. We know who kid, you know, who the kids are and what they should be working on. That's one of the wonderful pieces about Khan Academy because it is so targeted, students are working at their level. And we pull kids in before school and after school to make sure that everyone has that access.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Pedregal?
Last week, I taught CCD at a private school and I had a student that was the best reader in class. And I said, where do you go to school? And he said, CAF Pen.
All right. Good to hear. Thank you for sharing that.
Other questions?
Thank you, CAF Pen Meadow.
Thank you so much for letting us share.
Uh, we're going to be moving on to, um, middle school NWA. This is actually, um, just the scores here from NWA. This is again, year over year, winter benchmark to winter benchmark, different group of kids, same grade levels. So the first group is six, different sixth graders, different seventh graders and different eighth graders. As I said in the, in the introduction, the, the variance in the RIT scores is, is narrows as you get up, um, higher into the grades. So part of this, beyond the great work that's happening in all our schools and also at the middle schools to focus in on growth for individual students, piece of this compared to the elementary schools is that, uh, it's a little bit, um, narrow over gap between the, the scores. In other words, instead of 15 points, you can only, you can get two points. So it's a little bit of a easier, uh, gap to, to overcome. In terms of growth for reading, this is the cohort, uh, groups, uh, again, seeing movement in the correct direction. And I would, um, I would say that if we had the correct testing window, we'd, we'd most likely see even more growth here. Any questions on these ones?
Yes, sir.
Unless I'm misunderstanding the data, it appears that the middle schools are doing substantially better than the grade schools.
According to these bar graphs, but again, I caution you with the elementary in particular that, uh, in the discussion with the NWA, we need to take these with a grain of salt. The true element will be in the spring and when we have a more accurate data. And we're, and we're hopeful that everyone's working hard, we're going to see the, the gains we anticipate. So math now, same idea. But in, in terms of, you know, where we are, the, the sixth grade is lower than where we want. We're seeing better, you know, movement as we get in the upper grades. That's also, you know, one of the things we're considering, this is brought to my attention by, um, the middle school principals, it is a change in test. So I have to work with the NWA people to see what is the different format of the test between the K five and the, I'm sorry, the two-five tests and then the five, 12 tests in essence. Is there differences that would account for some of the drop from fifth to sixth grade? Or is this essentially our, our true number, as it were? And then cohort piece, again, seeing appropriate growth. This is students that were in fifth grade moving into sixth grade, students that were in seventh grade going into, I'm sorry, sixth and seventh, and then seventh into eighth grade, moving in the right direction. Are, you know, 61% where we want for sixth grade? No. But, uh, again, we're, we're going to be looking into mental growth across the district for all grades. Question, yes?
Uh, one of the concerns has been the, uh, difference in academic performance between Harperside and the other two middle schools. Have we looked at how this year, the different, uh, middle schools performed on the NWA?
Well, we constantly review all data at the district level. Again, building to building, um, across the eight, the eight elementaries, the three middle schools and the three high schools. And, um, that is something that I know the principals look at in depth and, you know, we have, uh, the principals here this evening that can speak to that if you'd like. But in essence, we, we believe that by continuously focusing on growth in each of the buildings, we're going to see significant gains across all three buildings.
So the answer is no.
I'm sorry?
What, what I'm asking is I, I want to know how Harperside is doing compared to the other two schools.
In essence, we're seeing, and Mr. Gali, if you want to speak to that?
I only know how Harperside is doing. I don't know how, uh, East Shore or West Shore do, you know, relate to NWA. I don't have access to that information.
In essence, when we look at growth for this year, uh, not just the cut scores and growth, there's similarities between all three buildings, both ELA and reading, I'm sorry, and math.
The growth back here is when you look at the, um, you know, where we are in the middle school so far. And I think Steve and Kathy and myself are very proud. You know, and listen, we still have a lot of work to do. You don't get the numbers where we are with just one school, um, carrying the ship. It's all of us kind of working together to get, and if you look at an increase, let me just pull up on here because I can't see it. You know, if you look at, you know, the last slide where we went from 62% to 72% of, um, cohort from seventh to eighth grade, I mean, that's a huge jump. 55 to 69%, 54 to 61%. You don't get those numbers when it's just one school pulling the weight. You get those numbers when all three schools are working together to, um, to increase student achievement. And if you have the time to kind of review some of the others, I won't go through all of them. We went up in every single category, um, from winter to winter. And that's due to, and I want to thank Kathy and Steve, we work very closely, and I'll speak a little more to it in a minute. But that's either the time and effort we put in to, um, to training our staff, training our students, supporting our students, um, through NWA and then transferring that to SBA. So our hope is that we see the same growth on that as well.
Yeah, uh, the problem here is, you know, there's a very specific problem, that we have a gap in academic performance between Harperside and the other two schools. And my question is, are we recognizing that we have a problem? And are we tracking, are we really improving closing that gap?
The answer is yes. The answer is we're aware of it. We pay attention to scores across all buildings.
But nobody?
And then we do work with all the principals to address. And in an individual building, in an elementary building, there might be a difference between fourth and fifth grade. So these are, these are the, the grander level discussions that we're having with principals. And it is something that we are aware of.
I, I'm not talking about fourth and fifth grade. I'm talking about a specific problem, which is the middle schools specifically. And the fact that two of our middle schools academically were, by a very large margin, underperforming Harperside.
So I think you were talking about the Smarter Balance assessment?
Right.
Which we haven't taken that yet. That will be taken in the springtime.
I understand.
But what I will say is, is that there was, um, um, even in NWA, a gap at least with respect to West Shore, I can't remember East Shore, but West Shore last year on the NWA in comparison to Harperside and East Shore, I think. And that gap has been reduced significantly.
That's the kind of information I'm looking for.
That West Shore's performance has risen dramatically on the NWA this year.
Okay, that's the type of, specifically the type of information I'm looking for.
I just want to, I just want to qualify that, though. That's on the growth data. You know, if you have an achievement gap, you're not going to close that in one year. But what we're looking for and we're constantly talking about, uh, and we want to emphasize with teachers, it's about the growth. Because if we don't focus on the growth and we only focus on the cut score, that skews people's perception of what we're emphasizing. If we're not just about a cut score, they're going to worry about moving a few kids up into that realm as opposed to moving all students. So I can say for the growth scores, it was equal between the buildings in term, and it was above expected, uh, anticipated growth for all three buildings.
I just got two different stories. Dr. Fieser said that the, the growth in, uh, West Shore was significantly better than the growth?
No, I said it was significantly better than the year before, that they showed tremendous growth. And so they're on par, I think, in growth with the other two schools.
Okay.
On NWA and the growth piece.
Okay.
So, uh, we're going to turn this over now to Mr. Cavanna, Mr. Hayes, and you're going to do your guests as well about, okay, what do we do now? To your point, Mr. Jaggedenski, that we now have various data points that tell us where our school is. How do you address that with students and, and staff? Thank you. And I just wanted to show you, he, he sent me a number of his slides from a presentation, I believe, to your staff. This is one of them. It's, it's hard to read, but I just want to show you that there is an emphasis on a lot of things. And what they're going to do is walk through some of the specific pieces of this slide.
Good evening again. My name is Paul Cavanna. I'm a great principal at the Denny Principal West Shore Middle School. I'm here with, um, Mr. Kenny Hayes, my assistant principal, and Mr. Julie Fisher, who is a curriculum here for ELA. I want to just say, as I said a little while, about how much I thank my colleagues, Mr. Gali and Mrs. Williams, as we work together as a middle school team. And I support, and I appreciate their support because we all learn from each other. Also wanted to say how much I thank, um, Dr. Fieser and Mr. Burke for their support moving, moving forward. If you look at our professional, um, learning, what our slogan is for this year is, I believe in West Shore. And saying that out loud, it really should be, we believe in West Shore. Because at West Shore, it doesn't matter what your, um, race is, doesn't matter what your economic status is. We believe that all our kids deserve to, to learn and deserve to achieve a high level. And that's been the theme that we've, um, worked on all this year and continue to work on in next year. And what you'll see are some of the professional learning essential questions that guided our learning, um, and staff training this year. And what you have to understand is everything we put into place is done systematically. It's a process and that process has been vetted through different levels. And the most important thing is we will continue to sustain the growth and the success that we've had with NWA and slowly start to, start, slowly start to transfer it to, um, Smarter Balance. But what we won't do is, um, throw out all our hard work. We will do it in a slow, systematic way where, um, where our staff is trained, where our teachers understand the assessment, understand the data that's being asked, how to inform their instructions, and our students have the stamina to be successful. So if you look at, and I'll, I don't know if you can see them, I'm, I'm not going to go through each part, but just some of the essential questions that move our learning. This year, we talked about how can the NWA assessment assist students in identifying the, uh, the targeted skills to increase student achievement? So we're always talking about embedding skills into the instruction. It's never about taking a standardized test and it's a standalone. It's all about looking at the skills within that assessment, how it, um, what they're asking the kids to do and how can you embed that in the current instruction that we're, that we're doing on the teachers. So teachers have to understand the reports. They have to understand how they can analyze the reports. They have to understand how they can use those reports to mod, to modify their, their instruction. The next thing is how do we modify student, excuse me, how do we maximize student performance by establishing optional testing environment? Planning is we want to put our kids in the best, um, testing environment to make them successful. And, um, we looked at what is a culture around high state testing? So, um, how do we support our learners through these assessments? How do we meet the needs of our students who are not reaching academic success? So when we use the NWA, which is important, I don't know if it's mentioned, but all the teachers in the district have an IEGD with the, um, Teacher Evaluation System aligned with NWA.
Do you know what IEGD is?
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. So within, okay, so within their evaluation system, they have SL, they have goals. So one of their goals is aligned to NWA student performance. So the teachers have buy-in, not because, and we know all our teachers love our kids and work extremely hard for our kids, but it's also a reflection of their performance and their evaluation at the end of the year. And that's very important, because that's another ground of buy-in and support, that the teachers want to do well not only for the school, not only for the kids, but for their self and their evaluation. So they're going to want to know what students aren't doing well, and how they can work together with their colleagues to improve their instruction. And the last kind of big essential question that we've been working on after, after January is, how can we strengthen and sustain our culture of high-stake testing, NWA, to encompass SBA and Science CMT? So are we understanding what the claims are within the Smarter Balance Assessment? Do we understand what the targets are within those claims? Do we understand the vocabulary that's being asked? And how do we then do we get, embed that into the instruction that's taking place on a daily basis? And also, the stamina that the students need to take that assessment, and how that assessment is very different than NWA. So how do we support our students and put them in the best environment so they can be successful? I'm going to turn over to Mr. Hayes, who's going to talk briefly about how students are able to utilize, how teacher data, you utilize the data to inform their instruction, unless anyone had any questions on the first part that I was going over.
So really quickly, IAGD stands for Indicators of Academic Growth and Development.
That's why I brought it.
So you've heard a lot of presentations, there's a plethora of data reports that NWA produces for teachers to really take deep dives, to look at individual students and groups of students. I think the power of what we're doing at the middle school is, what Mr. Cavanna touched on, is that we're not teaching skills in isolation, we're teaching skills, we're embedding them within the curriculum. We don't want our kids to regurgitate, we want our kids to be able to think deeply, we want them to be able to problem solve and think creatively. And that's what we're doing at the middle school. Another thing that we're doing, it's twofold, really, is that our approach is cross-curricular. It's not that you learn math in math. When you go to art class, you can learn geometric shapes and properties. You can learn how to compare and contrast artists like Cezanne and Dali. And you can write and really look at those type of standards that you want to address through skills and content knowledge. Same thing in science. When we go to science, we're teaching reading skills and math skills in science. Throughout every curriculum, you are a reading teacher. Throughout, wherever the curriculum allows it, you can teach math skills too. And that is the power of what we're doing in the middle school. It's not that we're teaching math and just math. Our students are exposed to mathematics skills and concepts throughout disciplines, throughout their entire year. And that is part of the reason that we're seeing the improvements that we're seeing at the middle school.
For the next section, I'm very blessed to have a very strong leadership team made up of curriculum leaders, there's one for each discipline. And Julie Fisher, who's been at West Shore for over twenty years, is really a strong member of that team. And her perspective is a lot more important than Ken and mine, because she's the teacher perspective, is on the ground floor with the kids every single day. And she'll talk a little bit about how we use that, how we use instruction to, to, how the teachers use data to inform their instruction.
Yeah, thank you very much. Very important that we were trained how to look at the data. It's one thing to get the numbers, but actually, as teachers in the building, to have time in the middle school, to meet as teams to analyze that data. And when we say analyze, we want to see first and foremost, what did they do well? I mean, this is a good place to be, and we want to celebrate our successes, and we had a lot of successes in the middle school. So that's the first thing, because that's where we get buy-in with our students. We want to go back to those goal-setting charts, that we have that nice through line in Milford, we have that same goal-setting charts that we're writing and creating with our students during advisory. We want to celebrate individually with the students during conferences. We want to call parents and make sure they know the strengths, because that is really the buy-in. That's where we improve our motivation, so that the next time we sit down, those students are invested in the test. And then, and during that team time, when we go over that data, because we've been trained, right, how to analyze it, we want to look at what we did well, because that's super important as teachers, because we did something good. So we want to say, hey, let's capture that strategy, and how can I use that strategy to teach something that is a weakness? So it's very important to look at what we did well first, and then also to move those students, you know, but who do we have to enrich? Who can we push? And then, obviously, there are a myriad of things that we have to do for the students who are struggling. And as teams of teachers with lots of resources, we can call upon, you know, differentiated instructions, splitting our classroom up into different cooperative groups. We have capable, wonderful reading teachers that come into our classrooms. These aren't not coming out, they're coming in. They're teaching me, they're teaching the students, so that we can kind of work on those gaps. At West Shore, and I know the other middle schools, I can speak for you, we have wonderful relationships with our elementary schools. They're very, very, you know, it's, when they do an intervention with a child, it's, it's targeted, it's slow, because if you have too many interventions, you don't know what worked. And that's passed along to us. So when I have a student struggling with summary, I can go back to what they teach, I'm going to do the high five, right, in pumpkin delight, so I can call upon those things that they did well with. The other thing, and I'll end with a little anecdote, is that, you know, yeah, we have different assessments, and that's important. I have a class, a first-period class that needs, and I have a couple students that, when I looked at the NWA data with my team, there was a weakness in inferencing, couldn't make inferences. So we met and we talked about strategies, how can we get these kids to improve with their inferences? We looked at Super Bowl commercials, we read paragraphs, we read children's book, we read regular texts, lots of eyes on texts, try to get inferences. And some students still weren't showing growth, but you know what? Thank goodness we had a second assessment, because that one assessment was almost a little bit of a red herring, right, a false clue. Yeah, in, inferencing was not going well for these particular students. But in the middle school, we have the best too, that we've been trained on. So again, we have that nice through line, elementary has that best one, we have that best two. I've been trained on that as a classroom teacher. I could pull those students aside as a smaller group, I could administer it myself, and guess what? I found out that they have trouble with multi-syllabic words. Well, of course, they're not making inferences, because they can't read those longer words. So you know what? We need those different assessments to give us a clearer picture of the students. So now, I have the reading teacher come in, how can we teach these, what are the strategies, this is what they do well with? We do that, then they get it, we monitor it, and we go on to inferencing, and you know what? We're going to show growth in that category. So it's really a nice model, the elementary to middle school, and then that extra team time to look at the data.
So at the end of the day, we're happy where we are, but the key is sustain and grow, and then transfer that to Smarter Balance. Thank you.
Mr. De Grego?
Thank you. So at the, in the CAFPEN presentation, we saw like the cute little frogs and the kites. So you mentioned motivating the students. What, what tools do you have to motivate students at middle school?
Sure, so if you look at, one of the essential questions talked about an optimal testing environment, and a part of that was student motivation. So before NWA, we're working on implementing this for SBA, as we do advisory activities. So some of the advisory activities for NWA was to look at their scores from the year before. So they have a nice organizer, they build a score out, and then they have to work with the teacher in conference and figure out, you know, what can I do to improve that score? So they would write that in their, on their handout. And they, so then they take the test, and then they get the handout back, and then they reflect on it. We also have like a big, we brought a trophy, and it's the West Shore NWA Growth Cup, and we have a competition among the five teams. So the team that had the most growth would win the trophy, they get the little plaque with their name on the trophy, and that team has a team dance. So that was a way to get the students involved. The other thing we do as well is a raffle. If the student makes their projected growth, they get their name on a raffle, we raffle off a host of like dumping down gift cards, whether it's-
Pencils, school supplies.
Pencils, school supplies.
The trophy was the best, because it, you know, you don't think they were going to have buy-in with the trophy, but they were really great about it. When Mr. Cavanna, Mr. Hayes paraded it through the class before the test, students first wanted to touch it, and there were a couple gentlemen who were like, no, 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 are you crazy? You can't touch it, because it's bad luck. And, you know, just those little, you know, anecdotes help realize that those little things make a big difference in a school game.
But it's not one thing in isolation, it has to be a complement, it has to be a complement, you know, the student motivation, teacher instruction, teacher instruction aligned to their evaluation, as well as targeted professional development that's done on the building level, the district level, to give the teachers the tools they need so they can prepare their kids to be successful on the assessment.
And just to add to that, we have a district initiative, Student Success Plans, and so students are going into Naviance, which carries on from the middle school to high school, and they're setting academic goals, they're setting social, emotional goals, they're also setting career goals. So part of them setting academic goals is looking at those various data points, whether it be NWA, SBA, Common Formative Assessments. So they're aware of, you know, where they are and where they need to go, and they're provided support in setting those goals as well.
Thank you. Mr. De Grego?
I was fortunate enough, the tour was short, I was doing a school trip, so I was given an extra amount of time to be in Ms. Fisher's class to witness what she just explained to us.
You were a good co-teacher that day.
And Ms. Fisher had a large room, and many students in it, and even though she was sitting here, and she goes to the student down there, so-and-so, tell Mr. De Grego about this experiment, or what we're doing, and he would explain it. And then she would go, okay, somebody will be, you explain, Mr. De Grego, what we did yesterday, and how it correlates to today. And I'm still looking for the child that's looking out the window, not paying attention, but Mrs. Fisher was so versatile, like, I'm going to use the word air traffic controller, she was in control of that whole room. Not one student was off the mark, everyone was on the same page, all learning at the same time at the same pace. And Mr. Cavanna was nice enough to stay with me, and I was watching how the students were all working together in little areas, and then Mrs. Fisher would call on somebody else and say, Susan, explain to Mr. V what we just did, and how we're going to work with this tomorrow. It was amazing, Ms. Fisher. You're like a conductor on a symphony. That was wonderful. Thank you.
Well, you're nice, but you know what? I had good teachers.
One other thing, just to thank you, West Shore folks, one thing that's important that Mr. Cavanna mentioned is that they're, they have focused on NWA, now they're putting a deeper focus in on the Smarter Balance results. I am working with all of the principals to review some growth data that came out of the Smarter Balance results, and then looking, how does that overlap with NWA, and classroom grades, and other assessments, and all those other pieces that give us a better picture of students. So actually, later this evening, I'll be going through the growth model coming from the state, but it is important that we don't just, again, emphasize one test. It's not about the test, it's about growth, it's about learning, it's about the content, the concepts, and the standards, and it's not just about one assessment. So thank you, Mr. Cavanna. Onto PSAT results, both for reading and math. Just to remind everyone what the PSAT is, it was redesigned in 2015, along with the redesign of the SAT. The first iteration of that first redesigned PSAT was in October of 2015. The second administration was in October of 2016, just a few months ago. The redesign was to align it to Common Core expectations for both the PSAT and the SAT. In terms of how does the PSAT relate to the SAT, it is the same, we were told it's the same vertical scale score from the College Board. It is, in essence, a different test in many ways, but you can make some correlation, but it's not a direct one-to-one correlation. We are cautious of that, it does give us some guidance, though. In this case, we do have our 10th and 11th grade students take it during the school week. And then, also, just as a note, as opposed to the NWA, this is a paper and pencil test so far. Again, the NWA and SBA are online. Any questions on PSAT so far? So again, year-over-year data, this is reading at benchmark, different groups. In 10th grade, this was the October 2015, and then October 2016, so last school year and this school year, 10th and 11th grade. In terms of participation rate, we are, on average, somewhere around ninety percent of our students take that. We are continuously looking to improve that. So this is a significant portion of our students that take this assessment during the school day. So in terms of achievement and growth, we're not seeing a tremendous movement forward, we're not seeing a drop either. Is this where we want to be as a district? No. Can we see improvement? Absolutely, with a targeted effort on this, on this, again, on the skill set, not necessarily just on the test. In terms of math, this is a significant concern for us. There is a, there was, part of this is a realignment of the Common Core, as we look at some of our middle school scores and our elementary scores. They are getting used to the Common Core and to the different way of instruction, and as they're coming up, we're hoping to see greater achievement. Again, these students haven't really been exposed to the Common Core or new way of learning, especially that K through three, which is the early piece. But any way you slice it, this is not where we want our students to be, to have under fifty percent of our students at what the College Board sets as a benchmark. Again, this benchmark is not set by the state for the PSAT, this is not a state assessment, this is a College Board assessment that we are choosing to implement, similar to the NWA. So their assessments, their benchmarks are set to what they believe they've created as a norm for 10th graders in the fall and 11th graders in the fall. As you may recall from our fall data discussion, there's a little bit of difference between what the College Board sets and the, and the state sets for, for math, I'm sorry, for EL, for the reading piece in terms of the cut score for the SAT, but in this case, there is no state score here. One other piece, in terms of cohort, rough cohort, that would be 10th graders in the fall of 2015, then they become 11th graders in October of 2016, so same group for all intents and purposes. So we have seventy-three to seventy-three percent, and then a slight growth from math and from 10th to 11th grade. We would like to see tremendous more growth, especially in the math piece. I do have the three-year high school principals here, they're going to speak to this, I'm going to walk through a little bit, what can we do with the PSAT with a deeper look at instructional level? Among the things that I, we do get from the PSAT, which is great, we get student-level data, including every answer to every question that they gave. So with that data, we can look at patterns. So, and we get the actual question, these are released questions. So if we know that a majority of our students answered B instead of C, we can dive into that problem, take a look at, and start to say, where is that misconception? Backtrack that into curriculum, into instruction, into our sequence, into our unit of study, there's a lot of deep things we can do. The PSAT and SAT also gives us groups of data, they break it down. It's not just a math score, but they'll give us, in basically different strands, if you will. For instance, the heart of algebra. You know, how are our students doing in this one specific area? We can trace that back to how are students being instructed in core algebraic thinking. So it gives us a tremendous amount of data, and it gives us ability to, to look back at all of our processes, you know, essentially, again, eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, up to the point of these assessments. Another piece, as we started talking, I'm going to turn it over a little bit over to our principals here, as to now that we get this data, some of the things that we are doing in reaction to this, I know in discussion with, with the principals, this is not where they want their students to be, and they want their buildings to be, and they know that we can improve in that, but I guess I'll just turn it over to any of you, but one of the things that we have talked about in the past is, we do have academic centers which can use to fill in gaps for student skills. At many of our board meetings, the student representatives talk about, well, we've seen a tremendous increase in the use of the academic centers, but similar to the interventions at the elementary level and at the middle school level, we can't depend upon this, what we would call a tier-two or tier-three kind of intervention, exterior intervention, to address when we have fifty, forty, sixty percent of our students not where we want them to be. That has to be core of our instruction. So, and if one of you want to speak to how we're addressing the core area instruction piece, we also have our two instructional supervisors here this evening for both math and ELA. If any of you would like to speak to that, I'll open the floor.
I'll start off by saying-
I'll start off by saying, obviously, we're not where we want to be. You know, I mean, that's pretty obvious. The question is, you know, it's not an easy answer to come up with why we're not where we want to be with math right now at the high school level on the PSAT/SAT. So that takes some education, and I do want to say, you know, I'm very proud, and I know Mr. Thompson is very proud, and Ms. Santy back there is very proud of our teachers, you know, so I don't, I want to make it clear to everybody on the board that, you know, teachers are working very hard. And I say that out of respect to them for their hard work. So it's not, they're not working hard. It's a matter of what can we do to review our processes, our curriculum, our, and what we're doing with students and what we're doing with the data to improve what we're doing with our instruction to raise academic achievement. And I just want to touch on what Mr. Burke has been focusing on, is really, for us, it's not only about the SAT score, it's about growth. And one of the things that I thank him for this is that we spoke about earlier in the year of putting PSAT not only in 10th and 11th grade, but this year is the first year we're going to be implementing the PSAT in the 9th grade. So what that's going to do is that is going to have us look at a cohort of students and be able to track them and really get valuable data, not only in 10th to 11th grade for sake of the PSAT/SAT, all the way from 9th grade. So 9th, 10th, 11th grade, we're going to be looking at the same students and saying, "Okay, maybe they didn't meet the cut score of the benchmark, but we saw growth." That's the goal. And obviously, we want significant growth, and we obviously want students to be meeting the benchmark. So when it comes to what we're doing, teachers need to be educated about the new SAT, and we've done that by sending them to workshops, by having them collaborate in school, in professional development, so they have a sense of what is expected on this new SAT. Then, we've obviously wanted them to be informed about their specific students. So they've received specific data from the PSAT on their students. So like Mr. Burke said, they can look at not only, you know, strands and where their possibly needs to go globally, but they can look at specific students and say, "This student needs more work in this specific area within math or reading." And then what they've been able to do is they've been able to adjust their instruction to see if there's a large group of students that might be weaker in a particular strand, they can adjust their instruction to address that within their class. Or if it's a specific student or a smaller group of students, we have support centers that are able to assist students in, I know, raising their achievement level in those specific strands, which will in turn, hopefully, hopefully, raise scores on SAT. Because SAT, as opposed to NWA, from my experience, is more valuable for our students, more meaningful for our students, because many students have to take it to get into college that they want to go to. NWA, not to say that it's not a valuable assessment, but for high school students, in my opinion, SAT is more meaningful, they're naturally more intrinsically motivated to do well. So, you know, I think it's a positive move to what we're trying to focus on, not moving necessarily away from NWA, but really focusing on SAT and the skills needed to be successful in SAT and adjusting our instruction based on informed decision-making based on the data. So that's it in a nutshell, that we've really been trying to do, along with things like Khan Academy. Our guidance counselors have been going in to meet with students and linking their students' College Board account with Khan Academy in order to come up with an individualized action plan, in order to raise test scores and achievement overall. So, you know, it's kind of a multi-pronged approach. It's education of teachers, education of teachers on, you know, their particular students. It's adjusting instruction where needed. It's collaboration with colleagues. It's Khan Academy. It's also, you know, occasionally doing real focused practice, SAT practice tests, to just have them gain that valuable experience to increase their comfort level when taking the actual SAT in April. I don't know, I'm having a stage here, so.
If I could, Mr. Thompson, if I could interrupt, if you could speak too. I know that we had a, for one year, there was a Smarter Balance in 11th grade, then the state switched to the SAT. We're now only into the second year of the SAT. How have you all been working, and any of you speak up, but how do we help teachers transfer that ownership? In other words, taking responsibility for, you know, the achievement in their classrooms and students, because we do have this set benchmark now that's very, you know, part of our accountability. So how are we shifting the sense of urgency and responsibility into teachers?
And I, thank you, Mr. Burke. I have to echo what Mr. Burke would said. It's, we have-
Yeah, Fran, can you?
We have some really good things going on. The scores are not at what we want them to be, and we make no bones about that. I can tell you at law, I take full responsibility for where we are, and I am, as leader of the school, very disappointed, as is, though, every teacher. So when you talk about that term, sense of urgency, everybody is focused on saying, "We need to do better." And as Mr. Burke would said, we're fortunate in that we have very committed, very dedicated teachers, but also very committed, very collaborative district folks. So I know Mrs. Swanson would be the first to say, "This is not a law problem. This is not a foreign problem. This is a district problem which requires a district solution." And so that collaboration is essential. So when we have those opportunities for our departments to share practices, to really dive into the data to say, "Okay, I have a class, an Algebra II class, and based on their PSAT scores, these juniors have a weakness in that Heart of Algebra strand." So I know that when I differentiate, I can put these kids together so that they can start working on those fundamentals, remediating that. Also, well, to Mr. Burke's point, all of our juniors are using Khan Academy. So what's happening at, at least at law, they are going on their Chromebooks, they are using Khan Academy, which, if you may recall from hearing about it, it literally takes this, each individual student's scores or PSA key results, and it provides questions that meet their level and that increases it from there. So you talk about individualized instruction, we've got it right there and the technology to support that. And then the teacher truly becomes a facilitator when a student is struggling. So it's that, it's taking a look at the curriculum and the pacing and the opportunities to integrate those Tier Two interventions for the kids who really are struggling. What we have found through our data is that we're moving the most challenged students up, and the highest end kids are doing better. It's our middle pack, which is our grade challenge, and that's why these opportunities to differentiate our instruction, to take it very seriously, to use the technology and the opportunities like Khan Academy, we believe that's going to benefit our scores and ultimately our students.
Thank you. The other piece to remember is something I believe Mr. Cavanna said, or Mr. Hayes, is that we can't just put these in lanes, that this is a math and a language arts issue, that reading is something that is done, problem solving is done across disciplines. And I know that we're looking at this as a school-wide concern. Also, if you take an assessment in 11th grade, there's four, five, six years of history behind that, so it's not just a one-grade or one-department issue. This has to be a school-wide review. And to the next bullet point, we have to take a hard look at curriculum, our instruction and our assessment practices. Are they aligned to the Common Core? Are they aligned to the needs of our students? And are they aligned across the district, the classrooms, et cetera? So there's a lot of elements into this to ensure that we are meeting each individual student's needs. That's all.
Yeah. Before we go on, I just had two questions. One is, is there a different cut point for 10th grade students taking the PSAT and for the 11th grade? So there's different cut?
Correct. And it goes, and then same thing, if I may, from 11th grade PSAT to the, to the spring SAT.
Okay. And one thing that stands out is in the PSAT math, last year in the 11th grade, it was like down at 32% versus roughly mid-40s. Do we have any idea why we were so low last year compared to this year?
Well, that was a first iteration of a PSAT test, and we had no idea what it was. Those results came out, and last year we took the time to go through, with that came a suite of online information. So unlike in the past, SAT would just give you their overall score, and that's all you got.
Right.
As Mr. Wow.
Burke.
It's a knee replacement thing. As he pointed out, the Heart of Algebra, we get now sub-scores about the different areas that they assess. And so really, last year, that was really our baseline. We had, it was a brand-new assessment, new information. Now we can go in and electronically see how our students did on each type of question, click a button, you can actually see that question, see what they chose, A, B, C, D, what the frequent answer was. I mean, you really have a much more in-depth understanding now. And so we spent last year really just understanding all of that, and we continue to really grow, you know, as Mr. Cavanna, I think we've heard a lot tonight about really growing our teacher understanding of what these assessments are demanding of our students and are we aligned with them. We continue to basically check in on that.
I mean, that's an impressive improvement, right there. The other question that I have is the number of students taking the PSAT in 2015 versus 2016. Has there been any significant increase in the number of students that are taking it?
All students take it in 10th and 11th grade.
Okay.
So, I mean, and when I say all, we're almost at 100%, somewhere in the 90s. You know, and that's something that I think that has helped tremendously to get that experience, that test-taking experience. You know, and I think that being, like I mentioned before, with the 9th grade PSAT, that's going to have, that's going to be another valuable, invaluable experience where students can practice taking a real SAT exam and then, you know, have that experience multiple times throughout the years. So when they take it in their junior year in April, they've had maybe three or four times of taking a real SAT exam.
So just to reiterate, it's been PSAT fall of 10th grade, PSAT fall of 11th grade, SAT spring of 11th grade?
Correct.
And now you're going to add 9th grade?
Correct.
PSAT in the fall or?
This year, we're going to be doing it in the spring.
PSAT, 9th grade.
And will it always stay in the spring, or will it?
We're going to continue to review that.
Okay.
Mr. Burke, you mentioned that the seniors or the juniors go, the rising seniors have this motivation to do well in the SATs because they need it for college. My curiosity stems from past experience with CAP test, et cetera. So the students were not working quite as hard preparing for it as the faculty were working, preparing the students for it. I'm wondering if a promotion of the role of the PSAT in the 11th grade for the National Merit Scholarships and other scholarships could maybe help? I don't know if you're seeing any motivational issues in the students.
Well, I'll tell you, more students are taking the SAT because they have to. Before, years ago, not every student was required to take the SAT. So, you know, I think it's a good experience, but it's also, I think, some students might not have taken it unless we required them to. So I've seen, I think, pretty solid motivation because I believe most students really want to do well, even if they might not have taken it before, because we obviously are encouraging more and more students to pursue college opportunities. So I can't say there hasn't, there hasn't been any major motivational issues. I mean, there's always some, but really not many that I've seen at all.
Yeah, I will echo that, Dr. Gregory. There is a built-in relevance to the SAT in the spring, and the students absolutely see the PSAT as a precursor to that all-important test. So there is, there's definitely relevance there. Now, do our, some of our students really shoot for that National Merit Scholarship opportunity? Absolutely. That's very much a part of the vocabulary that's promoted by the teachers and the school council. Yeah.
Dr. Gregory, for those students who maybe are not on track to go to college or not as motivated to take that test for college, we've been having long discussions with our guidance counselors about the skills that are needed to be learned throughout the year, to go on to certain career fields, and using those interest inventories, interest inventories through NAVYONs and what have you, to really motivate the students. We've been using incentives similar to what Paul was talking about at West Shore, to get those students who are not as motivated because of the college push for the SAT. So we have been working and having long discussions with those students as well.
And it also provides students with opportunities they might not have had before. If a student might not have thought they were going to college, and then they did well on the SAT, not to say that they're necessarily going to go to college or going to a four-year school, but it might make them more aware of what's out there, what they potentially could do in the future.
I think that also with the, with the switch came a vertical articulation from SAT. If you have a 480 as a sophomore, you should grow 30 points. Like, there's an inherent growth model in there where before it was kind of the really not rule of add a zero to your score when you got, when you got your PSAT back. That was really not at all an official thing from the College Board, whereas now they're basically saying, "Here's your 10th grade cut score, here's your 11th grade cut score," and those are, really, they're calling it, "You're on track for college and career readiness score." So it's kind of nice to say, you know, "This is where you are. Here's the work you need to do to maintain that," or, you know, "Here, we have to close them." It really helps move that conversation, I think, for kids, that it's not just this random score, but it really is, when I take that PSAT, it's given me the first flag of where I stand. So if we add in a 9th grade test, now we've got the other piece of really being honest, not only with ourselves, but also with our families, of this is where, this is where we are right now.
And I do see a tremendous difference between CAP and SAT. So that's a positive, hopefully, going forward.
Mr. Fischenski?
I'm just curious, is PSAT and SAT the only assessments that are now in the high schools? I mean, I know there's the AP test, but why?
NWA.
Oh, and it's still NWA.
In 9th and 10th grade. Presently, we have-
And twice a year?
Twice a year.
To the question, I believe, from Mr. Jacobin's earlier, why we're moving away from NWA. One, it's the motivation factor. Two, as I talked about the scale, as you get into 10th grade, the growth expected from, say, fall to spring is a point, 1.5. And, you know, as the skills compress and you're getting into more subtleties, you know, when we're thinking about reviewing literature, you can't really assess that through this particular assessment. I don't know if you recall, we gave you portions of the SAT to take earlier, gave you some sample questions, that there's, they're discovering ways on the PSAT and SAT to try to get into other areas and taking a hard look in reading comprehension, those pieces. To that point as well, about the interdisciplinary piece, we get scores in social age strands, science strands, you know, as well as the specific strands within the reading piece and the math piece. So we're getting a wealth of information, and that's for PSAT and SAT. So it's not just one discipline. We're again looking at the interdisciplinary piece. To one of the bullet points up here, we need additional data points because we can't rely on just one, and we are, as a group, looking at, very carefully at our midterm exams. I think that's an excellent opportunity to ensure that we have high-quality exams that are aligned to Common Core, also are aligned to the expectations on these assessments. I give our students an opportunity to demonstrate deep thinking, that we can use an additional data point. We know that one data point in April or October isn't enough. We need more information, and we need to ensure that we're doing that as we move forward. So I think we've covered some of the other points that were on this slide, so.
Questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to follow up with a couple of comments and questions on the overall presentation. I want to thank you, Mr. Burke, and all the teams for such a comprehensive and thorough overview of the data. I really appreciate it. I, also, going back to the NWA testing and the timing for a minute, I just want to thank you for explaining what happened and giving us a straightforward answer instead of trying to spin it. I know it's not always the easiest thing to do, but I want to thank you for- it's not always the easiest thing to do, but I want to thank you for kind of owning that decision and for your frankness with us. It's unfortunate that we didn't, that we don't have the data administered at the right time. I don't want to minimize that, but I just wanted to thank you. I also want to thank you, the high school, for bringing back the midterm exams, because I know there was a year or two where it didn't happen. And I think that the kids need that practice of taking those cumulative exams. Whether they liked them or not, you're smiling.
We had an interesting discussion, let's put it that way, so.
Okay.
But, I don't think there was a gap. We gave.
Last year, there was a little bit, a little bit of a list.
It was confusing, but we did have some.
Well, I had a freshman last year, I'll be honest, I had a freshman last year who had no midterms and then had finals. And that was a little bit of a shock to him and many of his friends. So I, for one, am glad they're back. The kids may not agree with me, but I'm glad. Aside from that, I'm heartened to hear about the new resources that we have at the high school level. That sounds like we're on the, on the verge of, you know, really having some good resources available to us to make some progress on the scores. And go back to the NWA for a minute, though. Will there be communication to parents in terms of when they see those scores about the timing of the window? I don't want to harp on it, but I think they need to look at the scores in that context as well.
I'll work with the principal to ensure that they get the right information.
Okay. And then finally, you said the spring data will be given at the right time, and then we'll see that in the fall?
Correct.
Okay. That's it. Thank you all. I just, I do have one question, though. I want to know why West Shore is sitting by themselves on the side room. We missed that.
Hey, how's Julie Fisher? She's always on.
That's it. Thank you. Mr. Wiskman?
I, the only thing that I think would round out my own curiosity and sense of wellness of the district would be to, if possible, have, as we roll forward into the future with this, to see a correlation between the PSAT, SAT test scores and student acceptance to their school of choice post-secondary. Because I would expect there to be a high correlation between those students who have high PSA, SAT scores, and their acceptance into their school of choice, et cetera. But it would still be an interesting component of our assessment of, you know, how we're doing, and would cement that understanding of, you know, that this really is enabling the students to move forward to their chosen path. If that's something, I don't know if that's even possible, because sometimes you don't have access to what students do, but to some degree, we often do have a, an understanding of acceptance. Students don't necessarily choose to go to the school just because they're accepted. They may accept several different schools and lots of different reasons of why they choose one over another. But I would expect there would be a pretty strong correlation between good SAT scores and acceptance to school of choice. Depends. I mean, if we're trying to regain all that, maybe a different story.
We can explore that, absolutely.
Other questions on this?
This is Casey, Mrs. Cabana. I just want to thank all of you for being here tonight and for sharing what's going on in your buildings and for all your hard work and your dedication every day. Very lucky to have all of you. So thank you.
Thank you.
So Mrs. Cabana, I know we now are gonna be moving to explaining about the SBA growth model. But in the interest of all of our educators here and the fact that some of them have to be in their buildings by quarter to seven tomorrow morning, I'd like to ask them to go home.
Sure.
And thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
I did. It's there. Can you see it?
Is it on the desk?
Yeah, I did. It's on the desk. I'm gonna let you borrow his.
Hi.
Hello.
All right, so.
We'll move on to the next.
Are we ready?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So now, what I'm gonna introduce is a, is a new piece that we got from the state. It's an important piece of data that we received. It took them a while to get to us. We just got it in January. This was for the spring SBA data. And their hope is to get this to us sooner, even with the initial data that we get in the fall. But definitely something sooner because we find this is gonna be a valuable piece for us to move forward in terms of data. So what this is, as opposed to the cut scores that would be reported back in October, this is about student growth. So you've just heard two hours about how we want to grow students. This is now gonna provide us with another data point about student growth, based on the state assessment, in this case, for, this is gonna be only for grades four through eight. You can imagine, to show growth, you need two years of data. So a third grader wouldn't have any assessment from their second grade. So we're only get data for, for those grades four through eight. So what are the, what are the essential ideas of this? This is, the concept is, idea, growth versus achievement. In the fall, we get a report. It's the percentage of students that have met a Level III. If you recall, that there's four levels now that they report, one, two, three, and four. To be at goal, you have to be at a Level III or a Level IV. You may recall from the CMT and CAP, they used to have five levels, and they collapsed that down to four. But we only get reported out for those students that have met that cut score. They're approaching this as much different. They're wanting to ensure that we're not focusing in on those few students that are at the cusp of getting to Level III. They want to ensure that we're looking at growth for all students. And so we, they actually set a growth target for each individual student regardless of where they score. And we get that information. The whole idea of the target, and I'll give you some more information on this later, is that you're intended to move levels. In other words, if you're Level One, they set a high growth target, so you can eventually move to Level Two. If you're Level Two, again, they set a high target to move you to the next level. After you're at the highest level, of course, they want you to maintain that, not go backwards. And again, we get granular data down into each individual student. The other important piece, you may recall, about this time last year, I did a report on the Accountability Index that we're getting, the State Accountability Report that we get for every, for our district as well as for every building. If you, you probably remember this. There was a, there was a gap. They had indicators one and then indicator four, that there was some missing indicators in between. And that was because they were waiting for this growth data. Indicator two will now be a part of the State Accountability Report. And one important thing to note is that they are gonna outweigh that compared to our cut scores. In other words, they are doubling the weight of growth compared to the percentage of students that met the benchmark, that met the score. So that's an important piece. And we should be getting that updated report, hopefully, this week, if not in the next couple of weeks, is our understanding. So in essence, what they do, again, you're only given credit when you talk about a cut score for those students three and above, at the goal or above goal. This, you're given credit to a school or a district for any student reaching their individual target. So it's not just about how many students made Level III, it's about how many of your students moved and met their individual target. So it's regardless of the starting level. So if you're, you're at the bottom of the scale score, you're at a Level One, if you meet your target, we, as a district, get credit for growing you. The school gets credit for growing you. So it's a different way of looking at the data. The other thing, there's gonna, I'm gonna show you two different columns. One, the first column will be about the number of students that met their individual target. But there's also another piece. We get credit for moving any percentage of that target. And I'll explain what that means a little in depth in a moment. But again, they're looking at these two different ways to give us more opportunities to show that we're moving all students. One final caution, again, this is still a summative assessment. In other words, it's a one-time-a-year. It's supposed to be towards the end of the year, and it's supposed to show whether or not students have been meeting their benchmark. But it's just a different way of looking at the data. And stop me if there's any questions as I go through. I'm gonna try to explain these in greater depth as I go through the presentation. So this is what the actual report looks like. You can go on to EdSite, which is through Connecticut.gov, and you can print out these reports for all of our, for our district, for our grades, and for our buildings. Just so you know, if you do go into the website and you try to get into, de-level into certain number, elementary buildings, they hide the data if it's below a certain number. I believe it's 20. So if there's less than 20 students in any category, there'll be an asterisk there. But in this case, what we're seeing here, this is all grades, so in essence, grade four through eight, for all schools and for ELA and math. And this is exactly what we get to see. The important thing here, this is significant for, you remember when I was doing the cohort before, I was talking about cohort in quotations? This is a true cohort, matched students. Students that were in our district in 2015 and in our district in 2016, and who will be in our district in, in May of this year. So this is not about students moving in or out, it's not about students moving in and out of the building. We actually, as in the spreadsheet, you get an indication of whether or not that student was even in your building last year, as opposed to just the district. So they're giving us more and more detailed data. This is what I was talking about before, I'll go into this in greater detail. This column is the percentage of students that met their own individual target. In this case, 48% of our students met their, their ELA target, again, grades four through eight, and then 46% met their target in grades, in math. So, it's a little busy, I'm gonna, I'm gonna zoom in on this in a second, but they give us a chart, and I apologize, it's the only chart we get. It's highlighted from a presentation from the state, and I couldn't take the highlighting off. All this is, is a grid. It shows where you started. So at the top, you have grade three, and then it gives you your scale score range, and then it breaks down the levels. In essence, as I said before, there's four levels, but the state has actually broken those down further to help them create targets. So if you look at that, that third column, if you will, it says Level One, then it says Level One Low, Level One High. So we're not grouping kids all in this big pot because that's not gonna be fair to them. We realize that students in the low end of that Level One need even more growth than the students even in the high end of that Level One. So I'm gonna go through this pretty quickly, and I can tell you that one of the things I was thinking about doing is sending you to the state to watch their presentation, and it, it wouldn't be helpful. So I'm gonna try to explain this, but it might take you a little while to think about this. You might have questions at the next meeting or, or other things, another time. So one of the other things to note, again, is that the purpose of the setting targets is to move kids. So you'll notice that if you look in the upper right-hand corner, it says, for if you're in one low at third grade, your target is 82 points on your scale score. 82 points. As opposed to if you're at the seventh grade and you're up at a Level Four, you only have to, your target's only 20. So they, they've taken an analysis, this was what took them so long, they analyzed the data for the entire state, created these bands, and then created these targets based on what they expect students to be able to do over time. But in essence, if you're down in the lower ranges, we have a greater challenge to move you farther, because you're behind the grade level. We want to keep moving you so we eventually get you to grade level. And we can't do that if you're just constantly going the same pace. We need to accelerate you in essence. This is the math range. As you can see, they've, they've created different scales, but it's the same concept. If you're in the lower range and lower grades, you have a higher expectation for your target. And if you get up in the higher, obviously, it says in the, in the last column under eight high, if you want to maintain your score at least. You don't want to backslide if you're at the top achievement level. So I'm gonna try to help you understand this through a student example. I'm gonna take you to a third-grade student that scored 2,420 on their math score in third grade. In our case, that would have been in the spring of 2015. If I look at third grade, and I go across and I find their scale score of 2,420, that puts them at a Level Two, but the high end of Level Two. So then their individual target is 60 points. Okay? So that's how we use this chart. Yes?
Does that 60 points mean that next year, that child should have added 60 points to their score?
Yep. Excellent question.
Glad you had the answer.
Thank you for setting me up. So a third-grade student scores 2,420. Their target, and I zoomed in on the scale in case you couldn't see it, their target is 60. 2,420 plus 60 is 2,480. So in the spring of 20, of last year, 2016, their target in fourth grade, now remember, they moved the grade, so we're raising the level here, and now in fourth grade is they get 2,480. We get the score back from that student, they're 2,470. Okay? So their target's 2,480, they get 2,470. You know where I'm going with this. So the student's growth is 50 points.
Hold, hold for a second, because I think if you go back to this chart, what you see is 2,480, and the student is expected to move to a Level Three on the high end, if I'm reading that correctly.
You gotta go to fourth grade, though. That would put them, that would still keep them in the second level, but it moves them up farther.
I'm sorry, okay. That's right, move them to the fourth grade.
It's confusing.
So they're not expecting the student to move up a level? They're just expecting them to stay in the same, within the same level?
Well, this, if you want to go back to that chart, as Dr. Fiezer was pointing out, so now, in fourth grade, they're at 2,480.
Right.
They're just underneath the second level. But they hit their target the next year, at 44 points, that will place them into a Level Three.
Okay.
They're making a reasonable assumption that we can't jump a student from one low to two.
So they're not over.
They're not overburdening the students for their level, but they are anticipating that if you do two years of this growth, you should move up at least one level. Okay? So who remembers the target?
2,480.
60 points.
60 points. So did they meet the target?
No.
No. So they did not meet their target. So if we had this as the single cut score, we, as a district, as a school, as a grade level, would not get credit for the student. However, we will get credit for this, because they, they made pretty good growth. So if you look back at the scale, they made, you know, they made significant growth. They made 50 out of 60 points, or 83%. But what does that mean for the district? So at the district or school report, they would not count for our growth rate. They would lower that percentage. Okay? So if there was 10 students, five of them met and five of them didn't, we'd be at 50% for the growth rate. However, what they do with that 83% is they average that in with all students in fourth grade. So there might be some students at 110, there might be some students at zero. They all average in. Whether or not they met their target, that's the key. It doesn't matter if you met your target. So this is now saying, you can imagine, if you have a student, the target's 60, and they got 59 points. We didn't get credit for them in an old system? Nope, you're not at grade level, nope. What the state is saying is that you should get some recognition for moving that student to a pretty high level of achievement. So that's how they, they put this all together. So in this case, the growth rate, they did not count, this particular sample student, did not count towards our growth rate, but they helped to move the dial on the overall percent of target achieved. In this case, the 83% would be higher than the overall average, so they're, they're moving it better than, than the majority of our students. I'm trying to make this make sense. Hopefully, you're getting a sense. Yes?
Okay. So the 46.1% that's circled there?
Yes.
That means 46.1% of the students met those targets.
Correct.
So that's like all or nothing?
So, yes. So of the 2,100 students that took it, about 1,000 met their target.
Okay.
That's a yes, no. That's a black and white.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the other column is, is like an aggregate of all?
Correct.
Okay.
And in discussion with the representative from the state, that growth rate may vary by different groups, but what we want to see is that average percent achieved closer to 100%. Because you want, you want to make sure that you're moving more students. And because it's an aggregate or an average of all students, then you're starting, especially if you have 2,000 students, you're kind of taking up the variance for the high end and the low end. In other words, the outlier. So you're getting a true sense. So this is something that we're definitely gonna be working with. I've been working with individual buildings. at attendance, discipline, that whole thing. We did sort of a whole perspective on an individual student because that particular student had zero growth, but they, in, in one grade, you know, and we looked at their NWA scores, they did find sixth grade had a drop in seventh grade, went back up in eighth grade, and this was sixth to seventh grade for the SBA. And we, through a discussion, there were some things that were discovered that occurred in seventh grade. So that's kind of where we need to get to. It can't just be, this is a report for the district, we have to do, okay, what does this mean for our students, or else we're just admiring the data, as we like to say. One important note, if you look at the bottom there, if you can read that, the state has set max and minimums for these growths. You can't get about 110%. So in other words, that student's target was 60, they get 120, they're not going to be reported as 200% growth. Likewise, if they've got negative 10 points, they're not going to be weighted at a negative, whatever that is, fraction of 60. So, so that, they're not going to get that negative percentage. And I asked Ajit this, the gentleman from the state, why, he said, again, to cut out some of those outliers. We want to make sure that we're giving a better picture. When I worked with individual buildings, I take out those, those cut scores, and we actually show real growth, because I think that's important for them to see how students are really growing, or, or going backwards in some cases, you know, if there's some students that saw negative growth, that's something we want to, we want to see as well. So that's something that we can do, because again, we get full data at the, at the, for every individual student. So the implications of this, again, the state weighs this more than the achievement cut score. This is where they're putting their, their emphasis to us, saying that this is going to be weighted twice on our report card, if you will, as compared to the, the students being the cut score. It's an additional data point, again, it's one time per year. Ideally, we get this sooner in the year because we're halfway through the year now, and it's, it's difficult to make that correlation. We can look back and say, okay, what happened to this group of students or this student for more information? It gives us more information in our subgroups. One of the things we did not discuss tonight is the, is the, is the achievement of our subgroups. That's something we do in October, but this will give us more clear and definite information, corroboration, if you will, of how are our different subgroups doing, based on race, ethnicity, special ed, free reduced lunch, et cetera. Are we, are we improving our gap? And again, if we start meeting some of these targets set for individual students, we should be decreasing that gap in essence. And then, like I said before, it helps us to dig deep into our data. So that's, hopefully that made some sense, because this is the reason we want to share this with you, is because it is on the report card, which will be coming out in a couple of weeks, and it is a significant weight on that. Are there any questions? I know that you're probably all tired.
Any questions? All right, thank you. It's interesting.
Just, I just want to click on the subgroups. That was information that we didn't have last time, right? If I remember correctly, was there maybe a lack of detail on the subgroups?
Last time meeting.
September.
September, yeah. The first, the first time we looked at SBA.
They did not give us that, that granular level data yet, and they have now.
They have now, okay. That was, that was my question. Thank you.
One thing that they do not do, just to prenote, is that they do not separate out students qualifying for free and reduced lunch. That's something that they will not do.
Okay. Isn't it, the subgroups all look together, everything is.
It's called a high-needs supergroup.
Right. Okay. So going forward, that's something that they will continue to provide in a timely manner?
We'll, we'll see.
Any other questions? All right. Do you have anyone who'd like to make a comment tonight?
I'm going to, I'm looking at it.
Do you have something you want to share?
Yeah.
All right. So, motion to adjourn then.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?